To order this regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on November 8th, 2024, through the posting and notification of the press in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 19.84. Commissioner Mallard?
Thank you, President Murray. It's my pleasure to introduce Sally Pope, the Principal of Monroe Elementary. Principal Pope was a counselor at Monroe from 1998 to 2011 before going to Marshall to continue as a school counselor. Sally returned to Monroe in 2013 as the interim principal and was asked to take on the position permanently. Sally has taught kindergarten, first and second grade. Ms. Pope has a bachelor's degree from UW-Whitewater in elementary education, a master's in counseling from UW-Whitewater, and a master's in supervision and administration from National Lewis University. Principal Pope, who do you have with you this evening?
Thank you, Commissioner Mallard. I have two fantastic Monroe Mustangs here with me today. I have Avery Helpenstein, and she is the co-president of our student council at Monroe, and she also represented our school on the Future Cougar Float in the Homecoming Parade. And then we have our fabulous little brother Alaric, who is a wonderful first-grade citizen at Monroe Elementary School, and they are ready to say the Pledge of Allegiance for you.
(Singing) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Principal Pope, one more, one more thing. I know it's been a while, but congratulations on being a Blue Ribbon School. You guys are awesome. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. Yeah. Next item. I need a motion to remove item number...
You don't need a motion. You just need a statement or a petition.
Okay.
And then a motion to approve the revised agenda.
Thank you. I am removing item 5.1, Recognize Fall Athletes From Our Agenda. So therefore, I need a motion to approve the revised agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Are we gonna vote online?
Yes, we are.
I can't wait.
(Laughter).
Thanks, Denise, for your help.
You're welcome. Is he all on lockdown? There it is.
Eight to zero. Commissioner Herta is absent today. Safety message!
Thank you. Just real briefly with the chaos of parking and traffic around school start and end times, just a reminder to just be extra careful. It's gonna be clear in about eight minutes. Nobody's in that big of a rush. Just take your time and watch out carefully. Just, especially around Marshall Middle School is when I'm at. It's really busy at the end of the day, and with little kids going all over, and I live next to Kennedy with little kids, and everybody, just take extra caution, and you'll get to where you need to go.
Thanks, Michelle. But you know, I have to ask Chris, how you doing with your smoke detector batteries?
Excellent.
Excellent. Good work. Change your batteries.
Change your batteries. Yep, the time change, change batteries.
Thank you.
(Inaudible)
(Laughter). We'll give you a list.
We just got the batteries.
We just gave you that, and we'll give you a list. Thank you. All right. Student presenters from Craig High School, Presley Morgan.
Okay, perfect. This is kind of gonna be short and sweet. Craig's biggest month for the things that we're doing is December, so we wanted to save a lot of this stuff. But to start off, Craig sponsored a tree at the Tallman House Tree fundraiser for Rock County Historical Society, so some of the chosen staff are gonna go and decorate that pretty soon. We just finished up the end of the first quarter, and our academics are looking good. In addition to our academics, our cross-country not only worked hard during practices but also during school, they competed in the state Wisconsin at Wisconsin Rapids on November 2nd and earned Academic All-State Team awards there. The cross-country girls' cumulative GPA was a 3.89, and it's their 24th year at state now. And the cross-country boys were a 3.88 GPA, and it's their 23rd year at state. They also competed at the sectional competition, and both boys and girls were sectional champs there, and many reported a PR. Girls' golf and tennis also went to state. And then yesterday, winter sports started, gymnastics, which I had to leave early to come here from, and then hockey and basketball. Recently, our clubs have been picking out what we're gonna start working towards for the end of the year, so our National Honor Society picked our cause for the Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girls Club have been working really hard this year to try and make the, just improve their whole area, and so we're fundraising money for them and trying for us to help improve their club as well. So we started popcorn sales and made $62 our first Friday, which was pretty good for just some popcorn, and then we're gonna have a supply drive for anything that they need us to bring in, and much more. Yearbook just finished their spring pages with over 1,000 photos from traveling events. Lots of the Yearbook kids go to our football games and just any sports to take pictures. They come into our classes, our clubs. We love our Yearbook. They're very involved. Blue Ribbon of Promise recognizes youth homelessness this week, so lots of our students and staff wore green today for that awareness, and we're collecting different items this week. On Monday, it was soaps; on Tuesday, it's socks, just random things like that. And then at the end of this week, we're all donating it. Along with another donation, DECA just had their canned goods drive, and we dropped it off to Echo right after school today. Our clubs like Lulac Bro and Six are going to the YWCA Racial Justice Conference and speaking there. And then lastly, our show choir just had a choreography camp yesterday from 3:00 to 9:00, and our theme this year is California Gold Rush, and our first show will be January 9th. So we were finishing up all of our choreography to present that to everyone. And then, of course, we have Thanksgiving break coming up, and everyone's excited for that. That's all.
(Applause). Next from Parker High School, Cara Sailing. Did I pronounce your first name right?
Yes.
Thanks, Greg.
So it was a busy month for Parker High School. November is International Education Month, so Parker would like to recognize our J1 and F1 exchange students. From China, we have Cece, Jerry, Mary, Aiden, Grace, and Judy. And then from Switzerland, we have May. From Spain, we have Paco. And then from Ukraine, we have Masha. These students enrich our culture by, our school culture, by sharing their home country with us and participating in athletics and other extracurricular activities. My friend Masha will be playing Presse... Oh, I always pronounce this wrong, because it's like a Greek goddess or whatever, but Presse...
Persephone.
Persephone, thank you, which is one of the lead characters in Parker's Hadestown Teen Edition, which is a production on November 15th. To follow up with that, Parker High School and the Parker Performing Arts Academy had a fantastic first weekend of their musical performance for Hadestown, the Teen Edition. There are three more performances this weekend. The understudy cast will perform Friday, November 15th at 7:00 p.m., and then the additional performances are Saturday, November 16th at 7:00, and Sunday, November 17th at 2:00 p.m. The tickets are available at the door, and with rave reviews and onstage live band, you won't want to miss that show. Parker DECA has recently canvassed the West Side Neighborhoods, collecting non-perishable food items in connection with Wisconsin DECA Tricker Canniburn, which benefits communities across the state. Parker DECA collected more than 1,600 pounds of food for our local food pantry, Echo. As DECA president, I'm very proud that we have been continuously raising more food donations each year. And then, over 60 students attended our first study night for the DECA competition after school on November 6th. The students were preparing for economics, finance, marketing, and management competitions. I'm excited to compete one last time at the DECA competition this year in my, in the entrepreneurship cluster. And then Parker hosted the first year, or not the first year, the first Lego League regional competition this past weekend. 16 teams from southern Wisconsin came on to, came to Parker. This year's theme is all about oceans, and they will highlight the STEM's role in exploring or improving the oceans. Each team is judged on their project and then moves to a robot competition phase. Each team runs their robot on the competition board three times to come up with the most points. Teams who participated at the Janesville Regional included Edison Eagles, Edison's Engineers, Harrison Hawks Bot Squad, Jefferson Jaguar Robots, Lincoln Robotics, Madison's First, Madison FLL, Marshall's Cardi Bots, Monroe's Mighty Mustangs, Roosevelt's Robots, Van Buren's Robotic Eagles, and Washington Makers and Movers. The top five teams move on to sectionals in December. Congratulations to the Roosevelt Robots, Edison Eagles, and Van Buren's Robotic Eagles for being among those teams who will move on. Parker French Classes participated in National French Week activities, so for the first whole week of November, they participated in scavenger hunts, snail races, created bracelets with French sayings, and played games from all over the Francophone world. And then, fall ath, fall athletics are nearly complete, so some of the October highlights that I would like to announce. Both our JV and varsity cheer teams performed at all home games this season. Our varsity team ended the season with our homecoming performances at the assembly and the halftime. Our JV team even came to cheer on the sidelines for the first half of the game. We had 29 girls try out for our winter season. Five girls of those, five of those girls were brand-new to the sport. 14 were placed on varsity and 15 on JV. We have three competitions scheduled this season between December and February, and our goal is to qualify for state. Palms is very excited that some brand-new dancers had tried out this October. Our varsity team has 15 dancers, and our JV team now has six dancers. We had a wonderful fall season with halftime performances at the home games and two routines for school assemblies. Going into basketball season, our Palms team will focus on growing our skills within dance and teaching our new dancers all of our dance routines and sidelines. Cross-country had a fantastic end to our season. For the girls' team, Trista Anderson got her lifetime PR of 2103 and placed 20th overall at the sectionals tournament meet. For the boys' team, also at sectionals tournament meet, freshman Kenton Cransell led Parker and placed 23rd overall. Lifetime's PR, lifetime PRs were reached by Brady Flynn, 1914, Sam Champion, 1950, and then season PRs were achieved by Alec Betlock, 1853, and Maddox Norman, 1856. Senior Mike Healy finished this season by qualifying to compete the sectional team for the first time since joining the team as a freshman. The boys' team ended up placing 7th overall. The girls' golf season was wrapped up with Grace Nylons finishing 37th out of 79, 78 individuals at the state tournament. Grace finished with personal best of 83 on the last competition. The team placed three girls on the Academic All-State Team, Grace Nylons, Olivia Larson, and Avery Lictor. Congratulations on that accomplishment. The girls' swim team has swam 21 varsity, varsity letter times across multiple events. We had an impressive victory over Madison East and some great meddling times at the Cougar Spring Invite. Finally, the WIAA sectional swim meet was Saturday, and we had a 12 personal season best times and 14 varsity letter times. Lily Mayfield broke the 40-year-old Parker 100 backstroke record with a shattering time of 5951. She also now holds the second-fastest 50 freestyle record with an amazing 2467. Both of Lily's times qualified her for state. This season, the Big Eight Conference had three boys' soccer teams in the top five and six in the top 15. Therefore, many would say the Big Eight is the toughest D1 soccer conference in the state. Given the high level of competition, it is always exciting when we can recognize one of our own as the top player in the conference. We want to congratulate our entire soccer team for their growth over the year and give a special shout-out to Alex Garcia-Groan-Dro, who earned a Big Eight All-Conference honors this year. Girls' tennis had another memorable season with 22 athletes competing this fall. Their season was in, was, had numerous highlights. However, we want to take this opportunity to thank our seniors and for their contributions, Esmeralda Garcia-Selvia, Violet McHugh, and Emily Sax. Volleyball season ended with a Big Eight Conference with win with a loss in regionals against a tough competitor. We thank our seniors for their leadership on and off the court. These girls are great examples of student-athletes, all balancing rigorous course loads while being multiple-sport athletes. Whether it was a big block kill ace or an amazing dig, our seniors had, each had a big moment throughout their season. Two players earned Big Eight Conference recognition, being Haven Jones and Addison Jones. Parker Football finished their season in October by winning two out of the last three games, beating La Follette 21-7, and winning our homecoming game 54-6. Multiple players earned a Big Eight Conference recognition. First-team All-Conference was Gavin Meyer. Second-team All-Conference was Cody Slater, Jaden Fraser, Jaquari Douglas, and Devon Connors Shaw at two positions. Honorable mentions were Dean Harrell, Drew King, Landon Wright, Palmer Butters, and Avery Eastman. In addition, four players earned Academic All-State recognition, Mason Wiedenheft with a 3.8 GPA, Jack Cruiser with a 3.8 GPA, Nathan Hatch with a 3.9 GPA, and Evan Vogli with a 4.0 GPA. We are looking forward to November as we bring our athletic competitions indoors. Our first home competition is November 19th at the Ice Arena, where our Bluebirds will host a hockey scrimmage. We want to remind everyone that our gates are now cashless, and tickets must be purchased through our GoFan system. In addition, we have added a cashless option through GoFan at our concession stand windows. We hope to see you all at our athletic competitions this winter. Thank you.
Next citizen comments, we have one. Liz Murphy.
It's gonna be hard to top their excellent speaking skills. So, um...
Just introduce yourself and your address, please, and then you get...
Yeah.
About three minutes.
Sure. I'm Liz Murphy, 208 Jefferson Avenue here in Janesville. I am a parent and school district employee at Craig High School. So I'm here kind of on behalf of my daughter, who is currently at hockey practice. A conversation we've had in our house for a lot of years is, you know, playing hockey in Janesville. When can we play? And with the new rink and coming and all, all these kids are really excited, and, you know, they want this co-op to come back to Janesville. So I'm gonna write some, read something that she wrote. She's not here, so, here we go. Hello, I am Macy Murphy, a junior at Janesville Craig and a hockey player. I'm excited about the new Woodman Center, where I hope to play as a high school athlete my senior year. I want hockey to feel more integrated into Craig High School for girls, and transitioning our cooperative to Janesville School would help that for future girls. Many in our community have worked hard to grow our girls' program, including Janesville Youth Hockey and the school district of Janesville, who carries the most significant number of female players we've had in a long time, and we anticipate further growth. The new cooperative will restore the community we felt as youth players. We would finally have our own locker room, eliminating the need to transport our gear, a climate-controlled arena that protects us from the wind and the rain, and we would benefit from consistent ice temperatures as well as consistent practice times and games. The move to Janesville will continue youth growth and bring current players closer to their high school peers. It's time for us enjoy the identical benefits boys' teams have had for years, such as proudly having the name Janesville on our jerseys and being included on sporting event calendars. There will be two sheets of ice in Janesville. Currently, you need 10 team practices before your first game. Due to the lack of ice and current conditions in our co-op, we will only get on ice six times before that. We have to have four off-ice practices, while the boys are able to get morning and evening skates in Janesville. I know many girls from other schools also want to make this move. Thank you for your time and consideration, Macy. So, so that's just kind of what we are looking for is, there's gonna be this nice new center right here in Janesville, and there is a huge following of girls' hockey that they all started when they're about seven and eight, and they want to play for their school in their own town, and that, that's what it comes down to, is we, we want to go for that. We want you guys to support that and get that in our schools for us. So...
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you for listening.
And there are no further individuals wishing to speak, so we'll move on to 4.1, Consider Approval of the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Motion in a second. And we're gonna vote electronically. That passes unanimously, eight to zero. Commissioner Herta is absent. Board items. Presentation and Consider Approval of the District Library Plan.
Tonight, I'd like to introduce to you Shelley Gard. She is a program support teacher for Instructional Technology in the Learning and Innovation Department, and Shelley Gard, in her role, helps bridge the work that happens in the IT Department and the Curriculum and Instruction Department. And she supports, as you know, we have many curriculum resources that have digital tools as well as other resources and technology tools that enhance instruction in our classrooms, so that's part of Shelley's role to support that. She also, as, she is a library media specialist as well, and so she supports our district library media centers and our innovation specialists that are the ones that, you know, run our library media centers every day. So with our 20 schools, we have 17 innovation specialists who, that's a different term we use now for library media specialists, and so she wants to share with you tonight our overall district library plan, and part of its Wisconsin legislation is improving a district library media plan. So welcome, Shelley, as she presents our plan.
Thank you. Good evening. We went through quite a bit of this and in, in quite detail with the PPC last week, and so if it's okay with all of you, I'm just gonna share some quick highlights, answer any questions if you have them, and then reference what the next steps would be. As Dr. DeGraff mentioned, part of our Wisconsin statutes is that we have to have a long-range library media plan in place, and that plan and the board approval of that plan is one of the stipulations in order for us to receive the Common School Funds. And so if you're not familiar with Common School Funds, that is a fund that we receive benefits from, it's grant-based, a lot of different things attached to it that make sure it's always going to support the library program. But one of those attachments, of course, is that we're being intentional with how we spend our money and how we play out the programming. And so this plan is to confirm that, not only for the state, but for all of you to share an update. Generally, about 45% of the plan, and I have a chart here for us if you wish to see it, we've been doing quite well. Apparently, the state Common School Fund interest rates have, have been very strong, because we've increased about 30% over the last three years, so that's great. And the way that we allocate those funds is generally as the district-level representation, I spend about 45% of that money on district-wide resources that the entire team agrees is best for all kids. Then I allocate 55% out to the schools at a per-pupil rate. So we just look how many students in each of the buildings, how much money is left, the rest goes to them, and of course, I continue to support them on making some purchasing decisions. Quite often, we purchase still at the same time, if all of the 12 elementary schools think this would be a really great thing to use in their STEM lab, we buy 12, or 24 if we need multiples because of the number of students. That funding, when it hits the schools, they tend to spend about 50% of it on print materials and digital, so specifically literacy-related, and then they spend about 50% of their funds on interactives, collaborative materials, STEM-based types of things. The plan is basically for the next five years, it is designed by myself and others, providing that long-range plan as you see, and so we've kind of checked all the boxes for the legislation code to make sure that, once it's approved at the board level, that DPI will acknowledge that and certainly continue for at least the next five years with, with sending out those funds. Allison already mentioned that we have the 17 library media specialists covering those 20 schools. One of their primary roles and functions, of course, is to curate and manage those collections that I've already shared with you, and then, more importantly, we think, but this is all about making sure we have approval for funding, but more importantly, is collaborating with staff, so that we're sure to use those resources to enrich learning opportunities for our students. I'm gonna stop there, and I'm gonna back up a couple of slides if it's okay, unless anybody has any very specific questions. This wheel that you see in front of you is the Future Ready This wheel that you see in front of you is the Future Ready Library. It's a national organization. And what they share is each of those wedges together add to what you have as a learner-centered program. And last week, I went through all of those very specifically and I shared some highlights of here are the things that we're doing really well, here are some areas that we want to continue to grow. And of course, because it's a cycle, we do this regularly. So, we're annually, where are we at with this? What do we want to work on next time in measuring our growth, just like we do with all of the other goals that we set for ourselves? So, unless you have specific questions, I know that at PPC, last week Commissioner Myers voted to move this forward for approval at the board level.
How about a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion in a second?
So, that was a word in the mouth?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm getting ahead of myself. There's a motion in a second? Any questions or discussion?
I don't feel slighted. We had a great conversation last week. Sorry, you missed it.
Yep, yep. Okay, let's vote. The only one we make talk is Dan.
Well, you know...
Can we stop him?
No. Well, okay. Let's vote. Passes unanimously.
Thank you all for all of your support. Have a great evening.
Thank you for the hard work. Appreciate that. Update. Long Wait Facilities Plan.
We have a smiley update. I was kind of reminiscing a little bit about one week ago today. I was anxiously awaiting our community's response to the communication for two referendum questions and want to say thank you to all of you for the work, the conversations, all the behind-the-scenes work. Our public supported our two referendum questions very well, and I think that's in a testament to the confidence that they have in the board. And I'm grateful for the work that we have all done over the last six or eight months. This isn't just a one-night kind of conversation. But it's exciting, right? We have an opportunity now to kind of take a peek at what's next and how we're going to do that. So, I guess I wanted to just first provide a bit of an overview about what's going to be next and then probably open it up for any comments or conversations. So, we have two questions. The first question that we'll talk about is our operational referendum. So, just kind of give you a background and information on that. That question actually won't go to the tax bill until December of next year. So, December of 2025 is when our constituents will see that on their tax. And then, actually, the school district won't receive any of those funds until likely the first quarter in 2026 because the city actually collects that. And then, after they organize that, then they give us the first portion of that. And then, as you're aware, there are a couple of different ways that people can pay their property taxes. They can do that a two-page period and then we get a second piece. So, just as people are communicating, asking you like, what are you doing with the $14.5 million? Well, actually, we, we don't have that. We're actually waiting for this year's to come up is actually how that rolls. So, again, we're grateful for that. We'll continue to provide supports for us to continue to provide operations lower, smaller class sizes. We identified technology, attract and retaining people, but it's the same amount that we have today. So, it's not in addition to, so we don't have extra money to do things, but it's where we want and what we ask for. And again, very grateful for that. The second piece is our capital. And within that capital is this $151.8 million, of which we definitely will have conversations about what it looks like. One of the things that I told our building principals and probably want to make sure that we continue to make this message clear is that we won't have 20 different facility repairs going on at one time, if you can make sense. Like, every school isn't getting something at one time. We have to have an organized model which likely is going to take up to four years to complete, much like when we did the referendum in 2020 and we did our secure entrances. We weren't able to work on every one at the same time. So, we're going to have a process to do that. In addition to that, Wisconsin does limit the borrowing of this to up to 20 years. And so, Dan and the Finance Committee will give the details behind what that looks like and we'll move forward, but we don't have, we got permission to receive the resources, we don't have the resources yet. And that will come in this next year, meaning 2025. And we likely will ask for two different borrowings instead of one, almost like if you think about as you're processing building your home, you might take a draw and you might take some of it, not all of it. Well, we'll kind of work through the processes of that. We'll have legal counsel to kind of work through the details behind that. Dan has a group of people who will help us identify when the best time the district should go to this bond because there's interest rates and variables. And when you're talking about $151.8 million, a few percentage points makes a big difference because that's a borrowing process that we need to pay back. In addition to that, then, there's bidding processes. First, we have to take a look at this like schematic design. You know, are we doing something in the areas of locations? Are we doing in like schools? Are we doing, you know, what, what's that going to look like and what's the schematic design going to be? From there, we want to have some development of that. We're going to need some administration sign-off to say, yep, that's exactly what we want to do. Then there's a bidding process. And then that bidding process goes out. So, we'll keep you informed and I know that the Buildings and Grounds and Finance Committee will be heavily involved in that. But one of the things that will be true about the work that we're doing is that there's a significant amount of work. When you think about $151.8 million, that's the largest referendum that this school district has had. I think it was the largest referendum past this, this election year. So, and I don't want to take lightly, this is big work and so we have to pay very close attention to the work, making sure that we have all the details in place. And we will work with great partners to do that, but we have to make sure that we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's on everything, right? So, as much as windows and boilers and electrical and plumbing and all those things matter, if the door doesn't lock, it doesn't, you know, doesn't work, right? We don't, it's something that you need. I was reading an article about seamlessness, right? And so, when we log on, sometimes we try to figure out our passwords, but we never think about, does the Wi-Fi work, right? And that's what we want. We want our schools to be in, we want the buildings to be temperatures right, we want our systems to work really well, and we don't want to think about that. So, we can think about the learning and instruction and the practices that take place. That's really the goal of this $151.8 million is to upgrade so that we're not thinking about whether it's too hot, whether the windows open, whether it's, there's handicap accessibility. We really want to upgrade that. And then with that, we've got some exciting times. So, we'll continue to provide the board with updates to, you know, where we are in the process, the partners that we're working with. Dan and his team will work closely because there's resources involved. And the, the one piece that probably will keep me up a little bit and something that's very true is that this is not anything that we're doing now. When you think about what our district is going through right now in terms of just maintaining facilities and buildings, et cetera, we're going to try to get this work done as quickly as possible, but we're not doing the work, right? We're hiring people to do the work. And so, that means that there's just going to be, we're all going to have a little movement, whether, you know, if we're closing off a couple of classrooms, we've got to figure out where those classrooms go and how does that work and all the details within each building that's going to happen. So, our team will do great work on that, but it's going to be more work. I mean, that's just how that's going to work. So, we'll be very cautious about making sure that we have the right people in place so that we're going to be really proud of the work. In three or four years, we'll be back here smiling about, here's what it looks like. We'll be able to take some tours and work through that process as they're getting completed. And then, the second piece of that would us start thinking a little bit about what Phase Two looks like after we kind of get involved and see what that talk looks like because we can't wait until everything is done to have the conversation because we know how long Phase One took us to get to that. So, we have to think a little bit about that. And I would add the same thing with our operational referendum. So, we have a two-year operational referendum. So, that will begin in 2025 and end in 2027, which means we're going to have to probably start thinking about that more carefully about how we want to go about this in a year. So, or less. So, one thing that is always strange a bit is how do we celebrate? You know, call it a victory, right? Or, I'd be a little cautious about that, but I just would say I'm really excited about the public support. One thing that we learned was that we want, how to get information and we want to keep our public engaged to the tune of 60% approvals. So, that means that we have a little bit of ways that have worked. We want to continue to provide those opportunities for public to give input as we make our decisions in the future. And again, I, I think that the public support really is a great attest to their belief in the work of the district and the Board of Education. So, thank you so much for your work. And this is, is really a, a great night to be able to communicate that message. So, that's what I have. I don't know, Dan, before I pass, Dan, anything else that I missed in there from the Financial Times that, sorry.
I got about 45 minutes left of information to share. No, you did great.
Two questions. When will we see a timeline of Phase One?
Great question. So, we have a meeting next Wednesday, Thursday. Next, next week is the first meeting we have with all of our partners, EUA, JP Cullen, and who am I missing there? School District of Janesville. We'll then start to take a look at, again, how we're going to, kind of attack the work is the right way, but that's the words that's coming in my mind. You know, what schools are going to go first? What buildings are we going to do? Because we're, again, we're not going to be able to have 20 different construction crews out there. So, again, we'll keep you informed. As soon as that group comes together and has some conversations, they'll start putting out the plans and then we'll, we'll provide that information. But we won't ask for any money until we have the plan, right? I shouldn't ask for any money. We won't go to ask for a, sell a bond, is that the right language I'm using? Until we have the plan in place.
They may go at any time.
Could, but we'll have a plan in place.
Based on interest rates.
Yes, very true.
Okay. And then, the last thing is because you've made those nice per-school sheets of kind of like what this referendum will mean for Monroe or whatever, I just asked that we really pay close attention to involving the administration at each of those schools. Just on our recent visit, Liz and I kind of hear from principals about like, yeah, I mean, that was kind of decided or I haven't heard any update on like, just making sure that we keep administration and that they have ideas on how best, because each school, there's some sister schools and there's some of them are similar, but the needs of each one could be a little bit different and maybe ideas that they have on how to implement and make those changes would be really good. Just, I don't know that, that, it probably happens, but I just want to make sure it happens really well this time.
Yeah, fair question. Thank you. I think there are some things that absolutely we need feedback, like the, you know, in the classroom spaces. I know Kim's been involved already with EUA, talking about what our special education spaces look like. And we can ask them some questions about what they think about plumbing and electrical, but, you know, I think there's some of that's like, it just is what it is. But the classroom pieces, what we do with our special education pieces, what the security and safety pieces look like, absolutely, we'll have conversations.
I have a question for Dan. And so, just to make sure I understand all of this, our, is, so when we, we look for bids or we, we go out and we wait for a good interest rate, right? I mean, it's, it's like, it's timing. It's, it's, when we, when, when we start to, I'm, I'm not using the right language. But, you know, it's not like it just, it just all of a sudden checks start coming our way. We go out, we, we, we look for a good time to, for the bonding and all that kind of stuff, right? Based on interest rates and everything else. Is that correct?
You are correct.
Okay, because I'm trying to remember from four years ago. And, and I'm just curious, I'm just curious.
Yep.
Like, is the, I, I seem to remember four years ago, we got in on a really good interest rate. We felt very good about it. Are we going to, are we going to have that kind of, I mean, is the bond market the same as other kinds of markets? Is, is it more volatile? Is it, you know, what do, what do you think?
Yeah, probably not so volatile. Right? So, so there's a one-page memo, right? So, that was my challenge, right? So, Mark owes me a soda pop now so that I didn't do a two-page memo to kind of go into some of the details that you're asking about. So, real quick, what we did in 2020 is, you may recall, I believe you were on the Finance Committee at the time, is we asked for a parameters resolution, right? And a parameters resolution gave us a wider window in which to capture the best interest rate possible. So, we captured, I think, about 90 basis points or nine-tenths of a percent of interest, right? So, we're not going to see that again, right? So, the board may recall that we modeled five and a quarter percent. The market is not necessarily near there, right? We're in the fours, which is good because when we're asking our community to invest in our schools, right? We want to be higher rather than lower, right? So, we'll continue to watch the market. We'll work with Baird in terms of the placement. But some of the things that you'll begin to see, right, most likely after the first of the year, is the board to take action on a parameters resolution, which just allows us to work within a timeframe to secure the best interest rate possible instead of just picking a point-of-sale day and whatever the interest rate is at that point in time, right? So, it allows us to play the market, so to speak.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something. We complimented the board for their work and I think the administration needs it, but what I really want to do is thank the community. They stepped up and in my positions that I, my job positions that I'm out there, there was a lot of enthusiasm by people in the community that were complimenting, we think we, this is something we need, we think you've done the job and that. So, it's nice to hear this, but it's also nice to say thank you, community, for stepping up and doing what's necessary for our children. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. First of all, I'd like to let you know that at the start of our meeting, the video service was not functioning. But don't worry, I did verify that shortly into the presentation, it did start working. So, if you want to go and watch the whole meeting, you will only miss a very slight section at the start. Like, you might miss the safety message from me and pretty much that's all. So, that's a relief. Anyone can go back and watch that. As you heard this evening, that PPC reviewed the district library plan that was presented to our, at our meeting tonight, so I won't go over that. You can go back and we have the presentation. If there's anything you want to see, we had a full presentation on that. Next, we learned about the Strategic Plan for District Athletics and Activities with a presentation from Mr. McLaury. There was a lot of information covered in the presentation, which makes sense because athletics and activities, that's a really big topic. Mr. McLaury overviewed the process in decision-making and the considerations that are included throughout the year, including things like this, increase in student participation and opportunities, create efficient systems and processes, investing in SDJ-owned facilities, systemic programming throughout middle school and high school levels, competitiveness with other districts, mental and emotional health. So, it's just a lot of considerations when they are, you know, making decisions throughout the year. Here are some things that the AD Department has been working on. Athletic directors participated in a data retreat. There has been a 360-degree evaluation of programs from the sixth to 12 grades. Code of Conduct for sixth to 12th graders has been updated. Coach and advisor handbooks have been updated. The registration process and fees have been under an evolving evaluation and update. As many of us know, we've moved to a digital ticketing system and also have implemented the Huddle and NFHS livestream for many of our events. Something that I'd like to highlight is the game... our events. Something that I'd like to highlight is the game management training that workers for our school events have participated in, that overview safety for those events. And I think that's really important for us to know that. Looking ahead to the future, there are needs that are being identified, so that SDJ can create a plan to address maintenance of existing facilities. There's so much more that was included in the presentation, so you can go back and check that out. And we are looking forward to inviting Mr. McLaury back for just, you know, continuation and keeping us in the loop, because these are all really great things for us to know, you know, what's going on with our activities and athletics. Next, we had a presentation from Mr. Garner, and he shared the staffing plan guidelines that the district will be following in the coming year to create the staffing plan for next year. This plan is based on our teacher-pupil ratio that the district follows for grade levels is assigned, as well as DPI guidelines for things like special education staffing. And all of these considerations just help us so that we can be planning appropriately for our staffing needs. Other considerations that are included in our overview is, you know, maybe space limits for lab scheduling at the high school. The district also has special considerations on staffing for transition grade areas, like the sixth and ninth graders. And then those practices will be used to maintain lower class sizes where applicable. So just kind of some general guidelines that we use for that staffing that was presented. And the final presentation was, that was brought to our committee, was an overview of the new course proposals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. But first, I want to say that Monday morning, I woke up with Mr. Menwell's voice on my radio. I don't know if anyone else heard that. It was a snippet of our PPC meeting, so we literally made the news. Yeah, you did a great job. I was, I was, I got a little nervous at first when I heard PPC, and I thought, oh, no. But it was you that was on the news. So, nice job. Yeah. So here are some areas that I'd like to highlight from that presentation. Spotlighter Show Choir is being proposed as a class, an actual class, in the music department, moving it from an extracurricular to a course students can take during the school day. I thought that was amazing. An exciting announcement is the proposed expansion of the educational offerings for our students in, in studying education courses. And this would drastically increase the number of education courses that have been previously offered. In the past, the focus has been on pretty much early childhood education, and now there will be an inclusion of general education courses that will all be offered at the TC level, which is a transcripted college, transcripted credit, so students can get a line through BTC, Blackcock Technical College, a college credit for those courses. And I think there's six courses that are new in the lineup, which I, I just want to say thank you to our district for investing in our future educators in our district. I think that's really very exciting to see. On the horizon also is a healthcare course that will focus on contemporary healthcare practices. That's a proposed course. Some of that's still in the works, though. Is that my understanding? Awesome. Great. Big steps since PPC. It's, that's just one week later, guys. Also, a math class name change is proposed. So sometimes the changes are not necessarily a new class, but we might have like a realignment of current classes. And this is one that just is a name change. So Advanced Algebra with Discrete Math will take the place of formerly-named Integrated Math Four, including discrete mathematics. Sometimes it's just we need a different name for something. Yep, yep. Okay. So are, are those, we'll be voting on those in the future? Is that, no, they just are proposed, and they're fine. So we're not, we're not needing to vote on those. I just want to make sure that I wasn't misstating. So we will be, the students will be seeing those coming out, which is really cool. So I think it's always kind of fun to see the evolution of our courses over time, especially as someone that went to school in Janesville, and some things are still there, and some things are totally new. Really excited to see lots of these changes. We also had a number of Neola policies that were reviewed and voted on and consent agenda this evening. Of course, for a full overview of the presentations from the November two thousand and twenty-four PPC meeting, please check out the video link, as I already referenced. Our meetings are scheduled throughout the year for the first Monday of each month, unless otherwise noted, at four thirty in the evening. And our next meeting will take place on Monday, December second. And our next planned session for that agenda will be in January, because we've, no, it will be in December. So if there's anything that you would like us to be looking at for the start of the two thousand and twenty-five, please get in touch, and we will get it on our agenda. Thank you.
I do. Our Finance, Buildings and Grounds Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, November nineteenth, at four thirty PM currently here at the ESC. Our PPC committee, like Commissioner Paul said, will be on Monday, December second, two thousand and twenty-four, at four thirty PM here at the ESC. And our next Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six PM, again, here at the ESC. And I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
December seventeenth or the tenth?
December tenth, sorry. Yep.
Thanks, Denise.
Four thirty.
Four thirty, okay.
Four thirty next week, Tuesday.
And I do have one agenda item that I'll be discussing with the superintendent on Monday, when we have our agenda-setting meeting, and it's related to girls' hockey. What's that?
Yay.
Yay, baby. Drop the puck. And that is all I have, and we are adjourned.